Special meeting. It's January 22, 2024. This is the zoning board of review. And we are here to consider an application or petition that's been filed by Seasons that has been continued from December 6. And before I read the description into the record, I'd just like to welcome everyone, and I'd like to repeat what I said at previous meetings. I know that this is a hotly contested issue for many people that are here. Obviously, we don't always get a crowd like this at our zoning board meetings. But it's really important to maintain the decorum and to give everyone your courtesy and attention. There are rules that govern this proceeding. And under our rules, the petitioner, the applicant, goes first. They get to put on their case after each witness testifies. The other interveners have the right to cross-examine the witness, and members of the public have the right to cross-examine witnesses. Everyone will have a right to say what's on their mind. And if we can't get it done by 10 o'clock tonight, we'll come back again and again until everyone has been heard. Please do not disrupt the proceedings. This is not a pep rally. It is a high school, but we're a little older than that in terms of decorum. Please give everyone the courtesy of your attention and silence and respect. As far as the members of our board is concerned, we have the Roberts Rules of Order. If anyone wants to ask a question, they have to ask me to permission to ask a question. And I want to make sure that we follow that so people aren't talking at the same time because our stenographer has to make a record of this. Because I don't think there's any question, whoever wins or loses is going to be taking an appeal to Superior Court. So we want to make sure that the record is clear, and that's for the benefit of all the parties that are here tonight, both the applicant, the abutters, and members of the public. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. My name is Lisi Gishite, and I'm the chair. The people that are sitting up here with me are members of our building and zoning officer, Mr. Hool. We have George Alzabak, who's a regular voting member. To my left is Michael Marcello. He's our city solicitor. To my right is Dave Collins, who's the deputy chair. To his right is Jennifer Hilton-Cavanaugh, who's a full member, and Jay Jackson. And our stenographer is Tara Ferrera. And our second stenographer is sitting before me. Her name is Susan LeBlanc. So with those introductions, as I said previously, this matter has been continued from December 6. And a petition has been filed by James Hall, general counsel, 695 Washington, George Washington Highway, Lincoln, Rhode Island, 02865, for a special use permit at Zero Souza Road, Plat 119, Lot 624. The property is located in a general commercial zoning and pedestrian-friendly destination zoning district, seeking to build a new Seasons Corner Market that will consist of a convenience store with a drive-through coffee shop and a gasoline filling station with four fueling pumps covered by a canopy. The applicant seeks zoning board review approval for its application for three special use permits. Number one, a special use permit for gasoline filling station pursuant to Article 4, Section 10J of the zoning ordinance. Two, a special use permit for restaurant with drive-through service pursuant to Articles 4, Section 8E of the zoning ordinance. And three, a special use permit for signage pursuant to Articles 12, Section 11 of the zoning ordinance. I believe that when we last adjourned, that Mr. Stolzman had presented his first witness and that she was still, had not been cross-examined by opposing counsel, if I'm not correct.
That's correct.
Yeah. So if you'd like to proceed?
Yeah, I would just like to reorient, then we can.
Where are you reorienting to?
Just remind people to sign.
Oh, yeah, okay, go ahead.
I have procedures to set.
Yeah, go ahead. I thought you wanted to move the meeting somewhere else.
No, no, reorient, not relocate. Can everybody hear me?
I can.
Do you remember this?
Can everyone in the back hear? Then why don't you move forward?
I'll check. How's that sound? Okay. So for the witnesses, you have to get very close to the microphone. Thank you. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. We are all in agreement on the procedural status. Ms. Cheryl Gueye-Mo from Dupree Engineering had given the site layout and had talked about the proposed three special use permits, the signage, drive-through window, and the gas dispensaries, as we discussed. Tonight, we have, in addition to completing the examination, cross-examination, and public comment on Ms. Gueye-Mo's testimony, we have three of our four remaining witnesses with us tonight. Mr. Ed Pimental, our planning witness, Eric Simpson, our environmental engineer, and John Chevlin from Par Engineering, our traffic engineer. You may recall, we had agreed by stipulation that all the witnesses presented were accepted as experts in their area of expertise.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I would like to just make for the record, because there was some public press on this. We did attempt, Colby Enterprises, the applicant, did attempt to hold a community meeting just to, we had received questions on our way out the door, and from time to time, I had gotten some calls as to questions, as to things like hours of operation and plantings, et cetera. So we thought it would be wise to have a community meeting. I instructed someone in my office to call Town Hall and see if there was a community room either at Town Hall here or at the library that would be handicapped accessible and easy for people to use. It was suggested that we'd be welcome to use the library community room, at which point it's not clear to me how the room was reserved, but it was reserved on that phone call, and we reserved the community room for that purpose. There was no substantive discussion about the project with anybody at Town Hall at that time. The night of the proposed meeting, we learned that Preserve Tiverton had posted, and we'd received notice that they were discouraging people from coming to the community meeting. That's fine. It just cost us a couple boxes of doughnuts. It was not a big extravagant problem. But nonetheless, I just wanted to make it clear that our position was, that we were, our intent was, to just answer questions that might otherwise have to be asked here at public forum or when on.
I understand. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I know that there were some, there were three or four outstanding questions that were left hanging, and I wondered if you could address those.
Yes, thank you. Do that now. So that's the purpose of actually for posting the site plan on the screen. That's the site plan we presented last time. I would just note that what we did was, the board had asked about filling, so we superimposed in purple, there's a filling truck located on the same site plan that shows where a fueling truck would park during fueling to show that there's circulation, adequate room for circulation around it. We also slightly modified the entrance off Souza Road to put a mountable island there and make it one way in and one way out, so we're able to do that. There was another question with respect to.
Retail hours.
Retail hours, thank you. And your ordinance does actually provide that it's, that it can be in compliance with the state victualling license and other state licenses, which theoretically could allow 24/7. But we're stipulating, again, for the record, that our hours of operation proposed would be from 5:00 a.m. to midnight, consistent with the Cumberland Farms up the road and on Main Road. Another question was with respect to internal, internally lit lighting. We were able to go back and go through all of those, and we can convert all of the internally illuminated lighting to externally lit lighting with architecturally appropriate fixtures, with the exception, with the exception of the pricing, LED pricing on the monument sign for gas prices and on the dispensers themselves, their small LED toppers, they're called. And there's two, they're three feet by three feet shell, pectin shells, scallop shell signs, they're three feet by three feet. There's one on each side of the canopy that are internally illuminated. With those, and I'm sorry, the last thing would be the menu board monitor itself. It's an LED monitor. So with the exceptions of the LED monitor, the two, limited to two shell pectins and the LED gasoline pricing, all this other signage would be the unlit or externally lit.
So we're talking about three or four?
Yeah, well, there's multiple, they're small, there's, on the top of each dispenser, there's LED lighting. Then there's one on the monument, LED lighting for the pricing sign. And the, and the, and the third category or the third type would be the menu board in the back of the building.
Okay, thank you.
I think those were the questions. There was also a question as to occupancy. I think a member of the public mentioned occupancy. Again, we have excess parking based on the retail side of your parking ordinance, but we did do the calculation. And theoretically, there could be up to, you know, there could be around 40 people in the store at any one time. That would be highly unlikely that that would occur, but that would be the permitted maximum occupancy by the building code. I think those were the questions that had been asked that I had from our notes.
Mr. Stolzman, the drawing that you have up there, I know is supplemented from, do we have a copy of that for the record?
I don't, yes, I, we.
Can you make one available?
We will, we will make, yes, thank you, yeah. I apologize, that's right. We'll submit that in multiple copies. Thank you. So with that, we've, that's where we are. And Ms. Gueye-Mo is here to answer questions you may have on the site plan and the, how the site operates. And of course, opposing counsel may have questions as well.
We're just working out the logistics of, you want to put a laptop on the podium or something?
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Karen Benson. My law office is at One Courthouse Square in Newport, Rhode Island, and I represent Preserve Tiverton. Madam Chair, I neglected to enter an appearance throughout the whole process. I'm in the record, we've submitted correspondence, et cetera, but if you would prefer, I have one.
That's fine. Why don't you submit it for the record?
Thank you.
We knew you were coming. Are you prepared for cross-examination of the witness?
I am.
Okay.
First, I would like to say your last name right. It's Guglielma.
Guglielma.
Guglielma, okay. Can everyone hear us, if Ms. Guglielma?
I can get closer.
Yes, I can get closer. And how about her responses, okay?
I don't know if you want to turn that so your voice is projecting outward so we could hear you, but the audience would have the benefit of the microphone. And I'm afraid that the witness and you are going to be relatively on top of each other if you're sharing a microphone.
How's that? How's that?
Yes.
I'll speak up. How's this, everyone? Okay. All right.
I want the witness to know that you're still under oath from the last appearance, okay?
So you indicated back in December that you've worked for Colby for some seven years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you've done some TEN projects for them over the years.
TEN project?
TEN, T E N.
Yes.
Okay. And you also testified specifically with the plan that's up that there's head-in parking in the front of the building, right?
Yes.
And then there's employee parking in the back of the building.
Yes.
How are you going to enforce that employee parking? In other words, will it be possible to enforce the employee parking, I guess the question is?
Yes, that's an operational issue that, that happens on every site, and so the goal is for employees to park there and that they're instructed by the management staff at the facility.
Okay. But there's really no physical way to do it. They're not going to have to badge in or anything like that, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So conceivably, the public could park in the back of the building, especially if there's only three or four employees in, and then have to walk around to get into the front of the store, right?
That's possible.
Because there's no entrance or exit in the back of the building where the employee parking is, right?
There is an entrance in the rear of the building for employees.
But not for the public?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you also testified back in December that the typical Seasons facility is larger and has more fueling islands, correct?
Correct.
And this one has been scaled down, was your testimony, because of the size of the parcel?
The gas pump, number of gas pumps has been scaled down, yes.
And still, you've crammed a lot of activity onto a small lot. Isn't that fair to say?
This, this site is consistent. I actually did an analysis before tonight comparing the number of pumps we have at other locations and the size of the lots, and this is one of the larger lots that we've worked on over the past several years.
So you did an analysis that was part of your direct testimony before the zoning board of appeals?
No, that was, I was just looking at other sites earlier tonight for a comparison of ratio to building size and pumps.
Okay. So your testimony tonight is that, given the size of the lot, this is in proportion to what other Seasons gas stations have, size with activity. Is that your testimony tonight?
This site has less pumps than the other lots that we worked on. The other lots are, that are this size have typically more pumps than what we have shown here.
Okay.
Can I take your mic? One second, I'll give you a second. We're not using. We're not using. I got a second.
Can I take your mic? One second, I'll give you a second. We're not using. We're not using. I got a second. 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 I just, again, my question is, where is the delivery receiver, the USD, where the truck is, the tanker deliver? Are they all in the front? Do you have anything on the back? But you probably won't be able to answer that.
I'm gonna let Eric, Mr. Simpson, speak to that.
Okay, I'll wait. Thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna move to the back of the building for a minute. I wanted to ask, oh, here we go. Wanted to ask about the stacking. In your testimony, you indicated there were stacking for about 10 vehicles from the pickup window back to Souza. But again, how do you enforce that? What if 12 or 15 cars pull in? They're gonna end up on Souza Road.
So, Mr. Stolzmann is gonna speak to the actual queuing for the co-brand at this site. There are 10, the space from the pickup window to where the curb cut begins at Souza, there are, is adequate space for 10 vehicles.
And you didn't have any engineering plans that would address 12 or 14 vehicles? Given the size of the site, there's no way to do that, right?
If you were to lay out additional cars, they can go to the south side of the canopy and queue up along that curve. And we have placed do not block the intersection signs in two different locations at that intersection if they were to exceed the 10 within the dedicated area.
So you do anticipate that they will back up further, that's why you posted do not block the intersection signs?
We posted do not block the intersection signs because there were concerns about trucks and other vehicles throughout the site. So, we have included, I believe it's two, on the latest plan.
Okay, so if I understand your testimony, instead of backing into or ending up on Souza Road in the queue, they're gonna end up in the area next to where you're supposed to be fueling or parking to go inside the store. That's where the backup will be for the window if there's more than 12 or 14 vehicles.
If there are more than 10 vehicles, they would queue within the site in a line along, along with the curb line.
But more than that, overflow?
That's certainly possible, and Mr. Stolzmann can talk about the counts that he's done at other locations.
You testified last month that there was a no truck sign from Souza Road. Is that still part of this revised plan?
That's correct.
So that entrance is still gonna have a 24-inch width sign? Is that right?
We, yes, we still have trucks, no truck sign at that Souza Road curb cut.
Okay. And this means that, if I understand the engineering correctly, that all of the delivery trucks will have to come in from Main Road?
That's correct.
So all of the delivery trucks, all of the customers who have big trucks, like a, larger than a regular cab truck, will have to come in from Souza Road?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, Main Road, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
With the revised plan, you're saying that delivery trucks, that is the plan from Souza Road with the new split entrance, you're saying that the delivery trucks cannot get in?
There has been no change on this plan with, with access. We did add to deter trucks, there was concern about trucks ignoring the sign, so we've added a delineator in the center of that curb cut, which reduces the lanes down from 12 feet to 10 feet and provides the deterrent of, it's a stamped concrete surface. So, the intention was just an additional deterrent in addition to the sign. But the, the access has stayed the same from the previous plan.
So there's no island, which was what was requested? There's, there's not a metal curb, you're saying it's just a different texture?
There's a concrete surface there.
Okay. But not a physical barrier? I'm sorry if I seem dense, I'm just not an engineer, not a physical barrier?
There is a concrete surface there, stamped concrete, per DOT details, at the center of that curb cut. It is not raised.
If I can just have a moment. Go ahead. Turn the mic on.
Let me, let me put... I could talk. So I propose that divider in the middle, I literally stamped concrete is not what I had in mind when I asked that to be put in. My concern with this, we could put signs, we could put stamped concrete, I could put a neon sign and people would tend to ignore it. Your delivery truck, or the people who's gonna go into there looking at Main Road as busy, they don't care if there's stamped concrete in the middle of that divider. My question, when I was here last time, said, please, is any way you could divide that lane with actual division? Where we'll stop delivery truck from using Souza Road as an access? And they will have to go into Main Road, and then we argue that differently. But stamped concrete is not the answer, what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, I wanna stay in the back of the building just for a few moments, all right? Loading's taking place in the rear of the building, correct?
That's correct.
And dumpster access is also taking place in the rear of the building, correct?
Yes.
And when we say loading, this facility is going to have multiple trucks a day, is that fair to say? Delivery trucks.
I'm gonna defer to our client on the, the actual schedule of the delivery trucks per day. And actually, our traffic engineer has more information on that, but there are different types of trucks delivering different products to the convenience store.
But is it your understanding as you need it as a sort of a baseline so that you could do your engineering, is that...
The regulations require loading zones marked on the site.
My question was, that most of the deliveries will take place during the day, isn't that correct?
I do not have the answer to that.
You testified back in December, I'm gonna move to the front for one moment, because I wanna go back to the tanks, and I'm looking at your testimony, that the 15,000 gallon tanks were right next to each other, that is that they ran in parallel.
That's correct.
Remember that testimony? So, I just wanna be clear, if you're the tanker truck operator and you're in the purple area, can you access both of those tanks by parking there?
Yes, and Mr. Simpson can speak to that. This is a very similar scenario to what we have on, on multiple other locations.
And Mr. Simpson's gonna testify as to lighting and all of that as well.
That's correct.
I'll hold those questions then. Just one moment, Madam Chair. All right, just a few more questions. We were at the loading in the back of the building a moment ago, and I'm not really sure that I understand how that's gonna work with the queuing for the drive-through. They're virtually adjacent to each other, correct?
Yes, the loading is adjacent to the, the drive-through lane.
So, if there's a truck and the, he's, the driver is bringing materials in from the loading zone, they're gonna have to cross over the queuing line for the drive-through. Is that fair to say?
That is correct.
He's at, the, the person who's delivering's gonna have to push his handcart or whatever he's doing between the vehicles that are lined up to get their coffee and donuts?
Wherever the loading is on the property, there would be a delivery driver that would cross over vehicular lanes to get to the building.
Wherever it was located.
That's correct.
But in this case, it's absolutely in the way. And the same is true if the public parks in the rear, in the so-called employee-designated spots, and wants to go around the front and go inside and, you know, get the newspaper. They're gonna be passing through the delivery zone, the queue for the coffee shop, and then they can get through the front door, to the front door, once they run that gauntlet.
If someone were to park back there that was not an employee, they would need to walk around the building, that's correct.
And there's no crosswalk in the rear of the building, is there?
There's no crosswalk.
I think that's all I have. I'll reserve the rest of my questions for your colleague. Can we get a copy of that revised drawing, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Christopher DeVideo for the abutter, Ms. Tracy Haywood. And just to be sure, I just checked my email, and I did submit my entry of appearance to the zoning clerk, and I hope that you have it. So, just a couple of follow-up questions, not necessarily in order to my, to Ms. Benson's. She asked you about when the deliveries were going to occur, and you didn't know for sure. But you're the site planner, correct?
That's correct.
Isn't that somewhat essential information, to know when delivery is occurring? The trash dumpster, the food, maybe it's gonna be during the peak time when people are coming to get their coffee in the morning? Why wouldn't you have that information in hand when you're developing a site as a site planner? It seems like a central component of your decision-making process.
This is consistent with most sites we work on. We identify the loading area for the best possible place on the site, combined with the regulations, and there's dedicated area for vehicles regardless of what time of day they come.
So, maybe I can make an analogy. I was just talking to another colleague as to why certain complaints have certain language in it. And he explained to me that one attorney just copied another attorney's, and another attorney, another attorney, basically, a bad habit gets carried to today. So what you're saying is, is that, hey, we do this in other seasons, and therefore, it, we're gonna do it here. Nothing's to say that what you've done in other seasons is good or bad. You're just copying from what you've done before, as opposed to taking a deliberative process to say, here's a specific site with certain specific facts, and I'm gonna design my site to ensure that it's going to work, it's not going to be a hazard. Why wouldn't you have taken that approach?
Delay on this plan is consistent with the other properties that are functioning as approved by other municipalities in the state.
They may have been approved, but we don't know if they're having problems, do we?
I will defer that question to the operator. My understanding is there are not issues with the loading zones on their properties.
Did you go to these other sites that you've been cutting and pasting to ask those operators to say, hey, are you having a problem? What might be able to be improved? So that you could have a more deliberate effort in your site plan design?
We did not ask that specific question.
Now, in your, what you didn't speak to in your prior presentation or testimony, and I'm not sure Mr. Simpson is going to be addressing this, but we have an issue of sound, okay? The, in the rear of the building, I'll stick with that geographically. So the rear of the building is going to have a, excuse me, a drive-through speaker. Is that gonna be on the side? Which side is that, that speaker gonna be on?
The speaker's at the rear of the building.
So it'll be facing eastward?
It's faced the right side of the page.
Okay, so, for everyone's purpose here, Main Street runs in a north-south direction.
Yep.
East is to the right.
That's correct.
Downward is south, and to the left is, is west. Okay. So the speaker is facing eastward, correct?
Correct.
Now, you, you spoke before about a photometric plan, which, is that how you say it? Yeah, which, which, which is a plan to show how light escapes or doesn't escape the property. Have you done that sort of analysis as to whether or not that sound from the drive-up window where there's a speaker, how that's gonna project off the property or not? I didn't see a sound metric plan.
Mr. Stolzmann, I believe that Eric has, is going to speak to that in his testimony?
Our environmental engineer will be speaking to Sam.
Okay. When you did the site plan, as the, you planned how the site is gonna be oriented, where structures are gonna be, did you consult with Eric about whether or not that sound would escape the property?
Yes, we, we have designed this, again, similarly to what we've done on other sites. And at the rear of the building is typically the best location for these, away from the residential abutters.
Well, wait a minute. Who, is there an abutter to your property here, to the east?
There is an abutter at the top of the hill, there's actually wetlands on the east side that we're directly adjacent to. And there's a large slope, the site is, is higher than us in the rear of the property. On the northern side, northern corner.
I'm talking about the east, particularly where my client lives. She's your abutter to the east.
There's wetlands to the east?
Well, to the end of the earth? Or is there another piece of property to the east that's occupied by my client?
And Mr. Simpson can speak to, to the distance based on the work that he's done.
Okay. But you didn't independently evaluate that when you were designing your site plan?
I did not.
Okay. And then, of course, to the south, not my client, but directly to the south, there's a home right to the south, right across from that entrance, frankly, the, off of Souza. Did anyone, or you particularly, when you were doing the site plan, determine or evaluate how the sound might emanate and affect that property?
I did not.
Okay. When you were discussing as the site planner, you were talking about, you spoke to the signs and the lights from the signs in the canopy in the store itself, but lights in general you spoke to. And you, and Mr. Stolzmann actually, testified that, based on the photometric plan, that if you were to hold up a piece of paper, it wouldn't illuminate. Do you recall that testimony?
I, I don't recall if I said that, but I do recall Mr. Stolzmann talking about seeing light versus light shining on a property.
Well, would you agree with Mr. Stolzmann's testimony on that?
I'm not sure exactly what his, his testimony was.
Well, let's see if we can go to it.
Did you mention that Ms., Mrs. Haywood lives to the east?
She lives...
I have on my plan that she lives to the south.
She lives to the south and to the east, correct?
South, south, across the street from Souza, across the street from Souza.
No, so directly across from that entrance
Yep.
is, I believe, begins with an M. What's his name? Mr. Winters, I'm sorry.
But to the east, I have, just on our plat map here, just so there's no confusion, I have Trilogy Tiberton LLC that is both to the north and wraps around the east side of this lot.
Right. Ms. Hay, Ms. Haywood lives to the south and to the east.
On Souza.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And a butter. I apologize for the geographic confusion. Yes. I would say, if you got a, if you got a plat map in front of you, she's, she's in a butter.
She's in a butter, she's in a butter because she's 200 feet from the site. She, she doesn't physically abut the property, but for legal purposes, she's considered a butter.
Well, counsel, I would differ on that subject matter. Because when Souza Road was dedicated at some point, those two properties met. At some point before Souza Road was put in place, those two properties met. And so, the case law is very specific that merely a road, a division, does not make you a non-abutter.
I'm not suggesting, so, just so, for the record,
Yeah.
there's no property line of Ms. Haywood's property that touches the property line of this site?
Arguably, it does, under the road surface.
Okay, so, under the road surface.
Sure.
But she doesn't own the road?
She, she owns the, she may own, as the case law suggests, the, the land under the road.
You're suggesting that in a butter on Souza Road, which is a dedicated public highway, that your client owns that portion under the roadway?
For, for purposes of abutting, she is in a butter
Right.
for purposes. Now, whether or not she owns it in feet simple or not, but she is in a butter for the purposes, not, not of 200 feet, she is in a butter.
Well, she's a statutory abutter because her property's within 200 feet of the site. You agree with that?
I would say, yes.
She's a statutory abutter.
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, I'm not sure if it's a semantic thing or not, but I believe she's also in a butter for the purposes as, as zoning case law dictates. She's different than someone who lives within 200 feet.
Thank you.
Okay. So, maybe I'll just do a word search here, it's probably the easiest way for me to find it. Back to the photometrics that we talked about. Let's see here. Transcript. Ah, yes. So, Mr. Stolzmann says, yeah, if I may. So what this does, it shows that, it shows you where the illumination is. He's speaking to you. Uh, yes, I apologize. This is on page 25 of the transcript, beginning on line eight. Ms. Gillemo says, okay, this is on, on line three, same page. So what we've done is we've took a different, took the different ranges of the foot candles, that, that is how the lighting is measured, to show where the highest intensities of light are in the site, and they are concentrated in the middle of the site. Mr. Stolzmann, to clarify the testimony, says, yeah, if I may. So what this does, it shows you where the illumination is. And it does spill a little bit into the street, but does not go beyond the street. So if you're standing across the street, of course, you can see the project. I'm gonna put a pin in that statement there. And you can see the lights and the signs, another pin. And the lights emitted from the signs, but it won't illuminate. If you're holding up a white piece of paper when you get outside of the shaded area, it won't create any illumination, okay? Later on, you confirm that statement. Does that refresh your recollection?
Yes.
Okay. So, whether or not the light illuminates a piece of paper, I don't know, maybe I kinda get that. But if you're Mr. Winter, how are you not gonna see the lights from this operation? If you live to the west, and there are two houses directly across from the west, or my client, how are you not gonna see these lights?
Are you asking me a specific question?
Yeah, how are you not going to?
This site is zone general commercial, and lighting is necessary for safe circulation throughout this site. And no matter what is on this property, there would be lighting on the site.
I'm not, that's not the question I asked you, whether it's general commercial or anything that's gonna be on the site. I'm saying, this project here, the way you've proposed it as the site planner, discussing photometric plans and lights and so forth, I assume your answer is, is that, yes, whoever lives in and around, you know, butts this property is going to see the lights from this project.
That is correct. Just like the streetlights that illuminate Main Road, you would be able to see light on this property.
Sure, if I had a big lighter, you might see that as well. But I think a streetlight is different than a illuminated canopy that's 30 or something feet long. They're different in scale, I would say, wouldn't you?
Potentially.
Okay. Now, you, you, you had a bit of discussion... So you're, you're not an architect, right?
That's correct.
Do you have an architect? You're not an architect. You're, you're not.
I am not an architect.
Do you, does this project have an architect of record?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay. And have you been consulting with that? What is, what is the architecture of records name?
Uh, it's HFA.
Oh, it's a company, HFA?
That's correct.
Okay. And in the development of your site plan, have you been in communications with that architect of record?
Yes.
Okay. And typically, in your experience, seven years, you said, 10 of these sites, do you consult with architects to have what they call view shed renderings? That is, if I was standing in Mr. Winters' property, or Ms. Haywood's property, or the folks that live right across the street, what they're going to see from their property? That's a view shed rendition. Have you obtained and reviewed a view shed rendition?
I have seen those view sheds before, yes.
And did, were they included in your packet of presentation to the, to the zoning board or to the public?
I don't believe there is a view shed rendering of this property, no.
Well, wouldn't that be important, to be able to know whether or not this project, whether it be lighting or otherwise, is going to provide, what it's gonna look like when people drive down the road or live near these houses?
We provided architectural elevations and floor plans of this building.
Yes, and you've also spoke to the materials that you're gonna use.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. And so, is... It is architecturally consistent with the general area around this project.
Sure.
We had not planned on providing an architect as an expert relying on the floor plans and elevations submitted with the application, per your application checklist. But nonetheless, if there's a desire to talk to the architect, we can arrange that.
Are you familiar with the memorandum in support of the project prepared by your team?
The one prepared by Adler-Palit that was submitted with a special use permit?
Yes.
Yes, I've seen it.
Okay. And are you familiar with any of the reports that it references?
I believe so.
So you've got an expert, Mr. Hool, real estate expert, and you've got an expert, Mr. Pimentel, who are opining that this is going to be consistent with the general character. But they're not architects, right? As far as you know?
As far as I know, no.
Okay. So how can anybody on your team opine that the architectural design of this building is going to be consistent with the general character of the architect in the area?
Objection, that's called for a legal conclusion that is totally outside the scope of our site.
I agree.
Okay, so just as a matter of housekeeping, if Mr. Stoltzman is going to be able to object to my cross-examination, will I be able to object when he's doing his direct?
You have a right to object.
Okay.
You have the right to object.
Oh, okay.
And we rule on it, you know?
Very well.
As it comes.
Sure, no, I just wanted to make, I didn't want to be impertinent by doing that. Every board has a different approach and tolerance to that type of approach. But having said that, the objection, I believe, is outside the scope of her presentation?
I don't think she's qualified to answer your question.
Okay, so when you're doing your site plan, well, I would...
Why don't you ask it another way, if you can?
You spoke to the architectural design, correct, in your testimony?
That's correct.
Okay. And the purpose of that testimony was to, you said, so that it would be aesthetically pleasing, paraphrasing, but along those lines, correct?
Yes, it was about the architecture style and the changes from master plan to special use permit based on the TRC meeting that happened with the applicant's team and staff.
So tell me about that. So you had a meeting with the TRC, and you changed the architectural design of this project to do what?
I was not at that meeting, but the outcome as discussed on our team was that there were elements of that building that were changing that we talked about at the last meeting with the roof style of the canopy, the stone bases, there were gooseneck lights, and among other things.
And types of materials, right?
Yes, I believe so.
So as you're testifying to what the project's going to look like, okay, was it your understanding that the changes that we see tonight were going to have some sort of benefit to this project?
My understanding is that they were going to enhance the building based on what the TRC had recommended.
So you testify, the architect has proposed, you're speaking about the architect, has proposed, oh, I'm sorry. Page 28 of the transcript, beginning on line two. So this is the current architectural elevation that was submitted. This is you testifying. "The architect has proposed New England-style architecture, which has a mix of materials. There's a stone veneer with wood grain, panels, architectural shingles, and a cupola." Okay. So I took it from your testimony and what you're saying tonight that these changes were intended for this project to have some sort of New England architectural quality?
Yes, I believe that that's what the TRC was looking for, and that is what the architect had incorporated.
Did you speak to the architect about why those changes were made?
Yes, we had a meeting, yes.
And is it your, whether you know or not, did the architect indicate that this would be consistent with the architectural style in the surrounding community?
I don't recall.
Do you know whether or not there was an intent to have this facility's architect to be consistent with the surrounding architecture of the community?
I believe so.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. With respect to signs, now, there's a standard which is required. If you indulge me one moment, Madam Chair. So just to be sure, as the site planner, it was your task to select the type of signs, is that correct?
We worked with the team to place the signs on the site.
And was it your task with the team to select the size of the signs?
These signs are standard Seasons Corner Market signs, and we worked with the client to pick the signs for the building and the site.
So again, cut and paste from one place to another, correct?
There was actually some changes from master plan to special use permit where we reduced the size of some of the signs and the pylon sign, and I believe that there was also mention of that, the TRC, in reviewing it with staff.
Okay, so, I take it from your testimony, then, there was some effort on your part and team that you're working with when you're preparing this plan to look at the size of the signs, the lighting of these signs, right?
That's correct.
Their height and location?
Yep.
Okay. So did you, these are non-conforming signs, correct?
There are signs that do not meet the minimum max height requirements.
What about size?
Yes.
And numbers, total number?
Correct.
Okay, so you've got size, height, and number.
We did, our team looked at it from a visibility perspective and the different site constraints and geometry of the parcel and other constraints on the property.
And your conclusion was?
That the signs that we were proposing were appropriate.
Appropriate for what?
To mitigate some of those challenges that we had.
Maybe I'll ask it a different way. Would this Seasons facility with a drive-through coffee shop with pastries, would it be able to operate if the signage was all conforming?
I do not have an answer to that.
But that's a standard, though. You realize that you need to evaluate, correct?
I would like to defer that to Mr. Chevlin's testimony on signage based on the traffic invisibility.
Okay, so, traffic signage is certainly a traffic expert's sandbox, wheelhouse. But as a site planner, and you spoke about signs in great detail in your testimony, about size and shape and just now, height, did you look to see whether or not, if you were to propose signage here that would conform, why didn't you look at that? That's a standard that you need to meet.
What we looked at seemed to be the best for the site based on the constraints.
Okay. You talked about landscape vegetation, landscape architect. I know you're not the landscape architect, but the site planner. So how high are the, how high is the vegetation on the south side, you know, along Souza Road?
I do not know, I'd have to look at the landscape plan to get you heights of those trees.
So there's a significant likelihood that Mr. Winters is going to look out his front window on his raised ranch, see right over those bushes, he's right across the street there, and he's going to be looking at Disneyland lights. Sorry, going to see a bunch of lights there, don't you? I guess my point is, is that you can't, you cannot have vegetation so high, particularly along Main Road, but certainly on there, because you want people to be able to see your operation. Right? People going up and down Main Road, you want them to be able to see this operation, correct?
Yes.
And so, in order for them to see it, the vegetation can't be 20 feet high. So is that correct, can't be 20 feet high?
I don't have an answer to what the height of those trees are.
When you designed the site, and you were considering whether or not there's going to be impacts to the community, did you take into consideration Mr. Winters' property?
There was consideration taken to buffering on the south side of that parcel.
Buffering in which way?
There's landscaping along the south side of that building to shield from adjacent properties.
Okay, shield what?
Visibility.
So you don't know how high those are, whether or not they're going to shield the visibility from Mr. Winters' windows or from Ms. Haywood's windows?
I did not have a specific answer to that. There was an intention to plant trees along that property line to provide buffering.
Is the landscape architect going to be coming to speak, Mrs. Stoltzman?
It is in the plan.
We had not planned on the landscape architect, but same question to answer as before. If we'd like elaboration on this, we're happy to provide a landscape architect.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your candor.
Could I ask you for the site of the cases that you quoted?
I didn't quote any cases.
Well, you said the case law.
Well...
That your client owned underneath the road, I'd like to find that.
So I'm not sure if it's Jermaine to this subject matter.
Well, you brought it up, so if you wanted to read it.
And Mr. Marcello, he likes to, what's the word, needle me a bit. I don't think it's Jermaine. She is an aggrieved party, end of story.
Oh, no one's contesting that she's in a butter, but you were the one that was mentioning this business about owning the land under the road, and I'd never heard that before, so that's what I wanted to know.
Sure.
Educate me.
For your own efficacy, I get that, and I will, because I had a case down in, near Gansett on this very subject matter as to whether or not they were merely an aggrieved party within 200 feet or they were in a butter. So I will, maybe tonight I can pull it up on my computer, and I'll email it to...
I'm not sparring with you, I'm just trying to figure out what you're talking about.
Sure, sure, yeah. So, but to the extent to figure it out, if you want to know for your own sort of professional and your position you're in now, I'm going to look for that case, send it to you. But for the purposes of this hearing, Ms. Haywood is an aggrieved party.
No one's contesting that, okay?
Sure.
You have a right to be here.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Did anyone else want to cross-examine? Any member of the public want to cross-examine the witness? I'm sorry, where'd she go? Okay, as I said before, the public gets to cross-examine or ask any questions that she wishes, but you're going to have to wait until the lawyer's done, so just take a seat.
I really only have one question, Madam Chair. At the 12-6 hearing, the representation was that we were going to have, we were going to be provided off-hours lighting to the whole line of questioning about the lighting that Mr. DeVideo did. I thought we were going to be provided with that plan. I don't know if it's Mr. Chevlin or Cheryl, but whoever has it, I want to reserve the right to cross once we have an opportunity to see that plan, the off-hours lighting plan.
Why don't you hang on, we'll try to get an answer to that right now.
I can answer that question, sorry, that was a question that was ready to be answered.
Why don't you take the microphone, no one can hear you.
I apologize for that, that was an additional question that was... When the store's not, I'm sorry, when the store's not operating, the lights, 90% of the lights are shut off. There are some safety lights that stay on. So the site is not lit up when it's not operating. And if I may make one other factual clarification, I apologize, there apparently was a miscommunication, notwithstanding a couple meetings on this. The median on Souza Road is supposed to be a mountable curb for safety vehicles only, and so it's called a mountable curb, and we apparently had a little miscommunication on that, but it's not intended to be stamped concrete. It is supposed to be an actual divider, but still adequate for safety vehicles to mount it.
Do you know what the height of that is?
I don't, we can get that information for you. But it would be standard traffic engineering design to allow fire and public safety vehicles, but not, would not, it would be disruptive to delivery trucks to do so.
Thank you.
And the technical term is called a mountable?
Mountable.
Curb.
Curb.
Mrs. Stoltzman, can I ask you a question about the lighting?
Yes.
From my understanding is based upon the testimony that you gave from the first hearing that the lighting now has been changed from internally lit, except for a few signs, to externally lit signs, correct?
That's correct.
As a result of that, are we going to get an updated lighting plan because of that?
No, we'll presume that the internally lit, Mr. Simpson will talk to that, but there's... He'll testify that there should not be any additional illumination.
Would it be less illumination?
Probably less, but he's willing to utilize the prior photometric study.
I got the impression that the internally illuminated sign was like the menu. That's not going to be on at night when you're not...
That's correct, the menu would be turned off.
Yeah.
And everything will be turned off except for some site safety lighting, so 90% of it.
I don't know what that is, what is site safety lighting?
Like a building, lights on the building for safety.
Okay, okay.
But all the signage would be, everything, the signage is turned off.
Okay, thank you, that really helps clarify.
The internal lights are turned off.
Just to clarify, my notes here, I have...
I'm sorry, signage will be turned off, yeah.
Just to quickly clarify, I have in my notes here for LED lit lightings, I have the pricing for the fuel.
Correct.
The menu in the back of the building.
That's correct.
And two shell lights.
Two shell lights, menu, yes, that's correct. The two-shell, three-by-three mounted
Yep.
plastic backlit sites, and the menu and the LED for pricing, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're not going to get a new plan?
Thank you very much for addressing that.
We're definitely not going to get a new plan.
We're happy to redo the photometrics based on alternative lighting if the board would like that. It's, the lights will be in the same location. It would just change them from internally lit to exterior lit with architectural fixtures, probably gooseneck lighting.
Thank you very much for listening to me that too, I appreciate you addressing that, thank you.
I'd be interested in knowing that, Madam Chair, so the representation on the part of the applicant was that the lighting would be, I believe the testimony is dark sky compliant to the extent possible, so I don't think we, the public, or you know what that means with the new plan. With the number of internally illuminated versus external, I think that it's reasonable to suggest that we ought to have some quantification of that. Because of the neighborhood, because it's surrounded by residential properties.
Are we speaking to a lighting expert tonight?
Yes. Well, yes, if we get there.
If we get there.
The intent, the intent is yes.
Eventually. Okay, um, could the witness come back? I think that the public has some questions. Ms. Gugiumo, could you?
All right.
This member of the public has some questions for you.
Sure. Um, in the last meeting, I did ask for Dr. Robert, Dr. Robert Bishop. Correct. Okay. So, I had asked her how many lumens of light will be emitted, and why this is so important is, I asked how many lumens, which is a measure of light intensity, will be reflected off the sign. So, just to give you, and the position of that, and that position really affects things. So, I'm gonna give you a simple example. Look at the ceiling and stare at one of those light bulbs for ten seconds, just ten seconds. Do it, and bring your head down. Pretty uncomfortable. That's a hundred watt light bulb, single hundred watt light bulb. So, we need to know, at the end of the day, the purpose of those signages are to see them, however you're gonna get it internally, if it's reflected, whatever, okay? So, look at that light bulb as a reference, and it's a big difference if it's up there, but the whole purpose is I don't see it, versus my signage that I'm staring at, and I think that, that's the concern. So, we can talk all these numbers, and I'm still waiting. I'd like to see what the total number of lumens is that will be projecting out, so that we know exactly what the people are gonna be seeing. Um, is that ready? I know I asked that last time, and what is the status of that?
So, the lumens plan is in the record. Um, we're, we're happy to re- recalculate that based on any changes we're proposing, but we have provided that in the record, and there are the...
Do you know where it is in the record? Could you give me, for example, a standard hundred watt light bulb, if you look at that light bulb, it's about fifteen hundred lumens, all right? So, stare at that, that's fifteen hundred lumens. So, I'd like to see, relative to staring at that bulb that's fifteen hundred lumens, what does the record show for the total number of lumens coming off?
We have, we have an engineer be talking to lighting later in our testimony.
I think that question might be better posed to a different witness.
Okay, Trout, we'll wait. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions of this witness before we excuse her? Um, why don't you come down? Please state your name for the record.
Suzanne Thayer Kramerz. Suzanne Thayer Kramerz. Um, I'm, I have a question about the delivery truck. I have a question about the delivery truck, and this was alluded to at the last meeting. I'm looking at the pattern of traffic, how the truck comes in. I wanna know how it gets out of there, and without having to do little wide turning, in, out, in, out, in, out, obstructing all the traffic that's coming from all the other directions.
So, the, the delivery trucks come in from the southern curb cut on Souza, which is en- sorry, on Main Road, which is enter-only, and they would circulate through the site and then enter, exit the northern curb cut, and those curb cuts are wide enough to accommodate the turning radiuses of, of vehicles, those loading vehicles.
Without them making any manipulations to make that curve?
They're, the truck turns using the, the software that simulates the turning movements, um, show those going out adequately to Main Road.
If you say so.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Pam Thompson, forty-seven Neck Road. Um, do the tank menus, is that the right term for the selecting your gas on the tanks? Is that a menu?
The, the price, the prices on the, the sign itself, on the pumps or the freestanding sign?
On the pumps, yes. What is that called? The window on the pumps?
Have the fuel toppers that have the, the prices on them right above the pumps, fuel toppers.
Okay, do you have videos on these tanks, and are they gonna be, um, is there gonna be sound and video on each of these tanks every time someone comes in and fills their tank, and is that necessary?
So, I'm gonna let Mr. Simpson speak to that when he talks about the, the pumps.
Okay. And I'd just like to say for the record that the dark sky lighting is not just for humans, but it's for wildlife, it's for bird migration, so please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So, I have, um, I have another question. Come to the fuel tanker, as we just addressed a little bit, just because I'm bringing her up. Do you have a spot on the entrance of that station for that fuel tanker to wait? So, for example, if that tanker coming down Main Road and there's someone, two cars back-to-back waiting to get on number four pump, or number, whatever your number, second one up, and that two cars in a row waiting, where is your tanker waiting, on Main Road? Or do you have a, you have somewhere on your site that that tanker has to come off Main Road because it's not wide enough? Like, do you have a, address it with the traffic, if you, prices low and, or we have a, you know, storm coming up, and we got cars in line behind each other, do you have a place for your truck to come off Main Road and wait in your property?
If I understand your question, if there's, if there's multiple cars stacked at the pumps themselves.
It happens.
So, the entrance, the southern entrance, the enter-only, is, is wide enough? I believe it's thirty feet without... Thirty feet, and it's one-way. Um, standard travel width is twelve feet for a single lane, so there would be room for a truck to pull off to the side, within the site, not on Main Road.
So, the truck will pull in and wait in the drive-in?
Uh, see the gray, the gr- like, the gray, lighter gray color? There's spacing in that area for a truck to, to pull in.
Physically will not work, because if he pulls in coming up Main Road, you're saying, right? He's not gonna go right to the left to wait there and then try to make a turn? Is that what you're trying, to go into the tanks?
He would have to pull off to, to the, to the left side.
Okay, but there's, okay, so there's enough room, so that gray area is part of the, part of the entrance?
That's correct. So, so those, those two areas are stamped concrete as well, similar to...
Ah, stamped concrete, again. All right, so, it's enough, enough room for him to wait off Main Road, which is a requirement I hope get addressed. All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Susan Anderson, on Main Road. I have a couple of questions. One is, is there a fire hydrant on this site? Because it looks like when I drive by that area, it looks like there's a fire hydrant, and I don't see it on your plans.
Great question. That's, um, right along Main Road, there is a fire hydrant, um, in the right-of-way. Uh, it's in the area of that northern curb cut.
So, it's in the curb cut, the northern curb cut?
There's a, there is an existing hydrant there now that would require being shifted over to accommodate the curb cut.
So, where will it be? Will it be still on your property?
It's not, it's not on our property. It's in the public right-of-way, so it would need to be shifted north or south to, to accommodate those, those entrances.
Okay. Um, I also have a question regarding the loading. So, you have cars that are lined up in the queue right around the building. How is a loading, it looks like there's only one lane that goes around the building at a time, so if you have cars lined up there, how is a delivery truck going to get by them to unload? It doesn't look like you, they can. Am I correct in that?
If, if, that's correct. If there were cars backed up all the way to Souza Road within, fully contained within the, uh, drive-through lane, um, the truck would not be able to get through until those cars pass, and Mr. Chevlin is gonna speak to the volume associated with that drive-through use, and can address more of that based on what we've seen at other locations.
Because I've seen, I've seen, just driving by Cumberland Farms, I mean, those loading trucks, they're in multiple times a day, you know, and, and even that Walgreens. So, they're not at a certain time. They go periodically, so you, you don't know, they could be at when people are lined up or not, so, it's just, it's not right. Okay, thank you.
Um, would you like a break, Ms. Stenographer? Okay. Um, do you have a question? We'll take one more question, then we're gonna have a recess.
Hi, Bob Martin, three thirteen Neck Road in Tiverton. I have a Bob Martin, Martin, three thirteen Neck Road. Okay. Um, I was over in Bristol a few weeks back and noticed that the Seasons over there has no, uh, drive-through. It also has a shingled sign going around the entire canopy for the gas pumps. Can you tell me why that is?
I, I'm not familiar with the Bristol location. That's not one that my office has worked on. Um, I believe that we're proposing a mansard roof on, on our canopy as well, which would be shingled, but I can't speak to, um...
But there, there is no lighting on that canopy that you would see if yours, uh, if your house was on the, uh, south side.
I'm not familiar with that location, so I can't answer that.
Who is familiar with it? It also has no drive-through. It comes down off of one of the streets, perfectly fine to make a turn in, but there is no drive-through on that property.
If she, if she doesn't familiar with, with the property, she can't answer your question.
Is there anybody here that is familiar with that? I'm sure there must be somebody.
We're happy to investigate the differences between this site. Again, Rob Stolson. We're happy to investigate the differences between this and the Bristol site. We've...
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, because there were deviations in these two properties, and the one in Bristol is on a four-lane highway. This is on a two.
We'll be happy to look into that.
Thank you.
As you're investigating, I visited a few of your sites, plenty of them. Your site in Middletown has no lit canopies. It's painted on, which is, as I read from your, your proposal here, that you had stated you wanna come to the community, don't change anything and make it look, belongs in the community. When I saw the one in Middletown, I was very impressed. I said, geez, great. No lighting canopy, no big shell things. Everybody knows where the station is. So, please look at that one too, and tell me if that fits where you're trying to build now. Thank you.
Will do.
Does the board have any question, um, of this witness? I think the stenographer needs a break, and I, they have other witnesses, so we need to move on. Okay. Why don't we take a, a brief ten-minute recess? So, thank you. Let's get this show on the road. Rob, could you have your witness get up there and point the flow of things, just, 'cause people in the back can't see.
Sure. Um, as a general, how the site works, I can do that. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, everyone. We're gonna have, uh, Mr. Saltzman. I, I know a number of you had asked questions at the recess about if someone could get up there and describe the flow of traffic and the trucks.
Check, check.
So, everybody could, um, understand, uh, and see what we're talking about here. And I also wanted to tell the public that all of the filings, um, in, in this case from everybody, and letters or texts, you know, from, uh, no, a butter, it's not a butter, uh, emails, are part of the public record and can be inspected at the, the town hall, the zoning office. So, feel free, you know, to go check and look at that stuff, and if you have any questions, I'm sure we're not gonna finish tonight. We'll come back and, uh, you can ask the questions then, okay? Mr. Stolson, if you could just describe...
Yes, thank you. Um, so, uh... This is Main Road, running generally north to south, and this is Souza Road, running generally east, uh, west to east here, east and west. This is, this blue line around the edge is the property line, and this, our proposal is to have two entrance, two means of ingress and egress, two entrances on Main Road. The south one, oh, as Cheryl's pointing out, the south one here is an entry only. It's asphalt, but with a, with a stamped concrete apron around. In the middle, a retention pond. In the fr- on, on, right at the property line is another landscaped area that's proposed for a monument sign, stone base with the sign on top of it. Then, the traffic would come in at the, entry only at the southern entrance and circulate for the pumps here. This is what we're calling the canopy, that has four dispensers. And then this is the entry and exit for automobiles only on Souza Road. There's a dozen parking spaces, one, two, three, four, five, six, about ten parking spaces in the front with handicap pa- parking. The drive-through entry is on the south side. It goes to the back of the building. There's a menu and order board here on the east side of the building, and the pickup is at the north side of the building. There's enough room to go around, cars that are queued there on both sides. The loading zone is behind here to, to the east, and there's another, ten parking spaces for employees only at the back. This is a fenced-in and landscaping around the fenced-in dumpster area at the, uh, southeastern portion of the site. So, the circulate, two entries, entry and exit to the north, entry to the south, and circulate around. There's a retaining wall here. There is significant slope to the north and to the east. No worries. The building size is approximately thirty-six hundred square feet, and as we indicated earlier, the canopy's anticipated to be, um, a mansard roof with shingles on it, and we talked about the, and we have, and we can show exhibits with the materials, uh, to be used on the site, but that's how the site flows, Madam Chair.
Could you point out where the, the, um, the fire hydrant was, or it's gonna be?
Yeah, it's, it's right now around where the hand is, and what we would typically do is work with public safety and either move it north or, or south, depending on, uh, flow, pressure, location, and fire truck access. That's a design that is usually done in the preliminary plan stage of planning.
I have a question, uh, not on, not that I see any... I have a quick question. I don't see it on the plans, although it's probably here somewhere. Do you know the, the, um, the widths of the vegetation buffers from, like, asphalt to property line on, um, north, east, and south?
We'll, we'll get those, we can get all those dimensions for you. Um, we could guesstimate them now based on scale, but we'll get, we'll, Cheryl, let's provide the board a, uh, dimensional, uh, both just widths and square footage of the landscaped area. We'll do that. Width, width and square footage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions while Mr. Stolzman's up here about the, the flow plan? You have to come forward, and you have to tell, tell the stenographer your name. We need your, we need your name and address.
Sir, we're trying to make a record, and we need you to stand up here because we need it for the record. Thank you.
Okay, is that gonna work? My name is Ron Marsh. I live at forty-eight-four Rodway. My question was, the diagram seems to show Souza Road as wider or, as wide, or even wider than West Main, than, than Main Road. Now, everyone here should realize that Souza Road is a narrow country lane, and Main Road is, is a two-lane road, so I'm wondering why Souza Road appears wider. That's all. That was my question. That's all. That was my question.
Madam Chair, we've just, we've taken that directly from the available satellite imagery and GIS. We can check the widths, but at that point, that's, we believe that's an accurate representation of the current condition.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jeremy Hillkacke, Jay Edwards, Merritt Avenue, Tiverton. Jay Edwards. My big question is about circulation. So you seem to rely, be relying very heavily on the drivers doing what you want them to And we all know it ain't going to happen. So you're coming south on Main Road, and you're expecting them to turn left into the facility, and then they're going to want to go to the drive-in. So they're going to cross in front of the entrance of Souza Road, and they're going to get to a choke point. Now, how wide is it from the building to the vegetation to the south of that building? Do we know? It doesn't look from this drawing like two cars can pass each other.
We do, and we did discuss the widths. I'm glad to bring Ms. Gugliamo back, and we can go back into the widths of available traffic flow. We also will have Mr. Chevlin, our traffic engineer, who will specifically talk to movements on the site. So whatever the board's preferences, we're happy to do it.
So to continue on.
Why don't you let her answer your question before you ask the other one?
Oh, is she coming?
Yeah, she's right there.
Okay.
So I believe the question is the width of the drive-through entrance lane on the south side of the building?
Yeah.
That is 15 feet.
All right. So I really don't see cars passing each other. So when you're coming in, let's just say, somebody wants to turn right off of Souza Road into the facility and want to make a hard right to go to the driver. Meantime, you have cars coming from the Main Road wanting to do the same thing. That becomes a choke point, and they're going to back up Souza Road. They're also liable to back up on the Main Road. And then you're just going to end up with a queue, particularly in the morning when people go to work. If you have anybody coming in, let's say, with a large van, like a construction van, like a construction crew going to work, these are real tight. They're pretty tight. And I just don't see how this is going to work efficiently and effectively. And I don't think we in town want to have backups on Souza and Main Road. Certain times of the day, you could come down Main Road heading south, and you might spend two or three minutes, if you're crazy enough, to try to make a left on Souza Road. The same thing's going to happen when people exit this.
Mr. Marsh, this is an opportunity for you to ask questions, not to express your opinion on the project. But you're welcome to come back later at the end of the, at the end of the hearing and express these sentiments. And I think that the traffic engineer is probably a better witness to address the questions and the concerns that you have.
When are we going to have him?
I think, is he next? I don't, I'm not, you know, I don't have a, I don't know which witness is coming next.
Well, this is just a thought.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question, just because you're up here and you laid the site, and I'm not sure if it's doable. But honestly, I thought about it because I was just standing earlier. And I know you put a sidewalk coming Main Road into the vegetation to your, whatever down there. And I'm not sure how it works for the highway. I don't know how that works. But is there any way to have a sidewalk actually on Souza Road? Like, I feel like when, if we ever have that development happen up there, it's going to be kids, their parents, whatever, walk, if this site ever builds, they're going to come down Souza Road, and it's like people coming up Main Road trying to get into your site, all that. But there's no sidewalk down Main Road. I'm not sure if this is, could be part of your property to put a sidewalk coming down Souza Road? Or, like, I feel like should be a sidewalk. If you're going to allow pedestrians to go in and out, and you definitely, Souza Road's going to get busier. We're not, we're not blind about it. Is there any way you could address it into that vegetation to put a sidewalk on Souza Road? I'm not sure if it's doable. I'm not sure of this. I don't know how that works.
It's something that we can look at with the DBW and the applicant to see if the grading is there, if the layout is wide enough. There is some swales on our property side that would create some potential issues, but we can certainly explore that option and get back to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Timothy Conick, 15 Salisbury Street in Tiverton. I'm just curious, if you look at the two driveways, you said that the southern one is just an entrance, and the more northern one is both an entrance and an exit. Is that correct? I understand that? Okay.
The northernly drive is exit only.
So you have, okay, because there's two sides to these pumps, right? So you're going to have cars. Are they all going to be facing north? Both sides of these pumps? Are you going to have any vehicles coming from the northern end of those pumps to get gas?
I think you're asking if there's full circulation around the canopy, which the pumps are under. So there's two-way access around the canopy, but there's only an entry and exit onto Main Road. They're dedicated entrance and exit only.
Okay. So if the gas cap on my car is on the driver's side, and all the pumps on the store side of that canopy are currently in use, am I going to be able to drive around and come?
It's similar to most gas stations. You could circulate 360 around that.
I just wanted to get that clear before I ask my real question. Has anyone looked at where the headlights for all those cars that are aiming south are going to end up? Because to me, it looks like they're going directly into the person's house, straight across the street where that driveway is. Seems to line up perfectly. Are all the headlights from those cars going to be right straight in the windows of your, what may or may not be considered an abutter's house? Any studies been done? That's my question.
Our lighting expert is going to speak on the headlights.
I'm sorry, what was the answer?
Our lighting expert is going to address the headlights.
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Hi. Who are you?
Tim Winters, 15 Souza Road. I have the pleasure of being the southwest abutter. So my main question and concern, I guess, is kind of the optics of when I'm in my house. It's very hard to get the top, from a top-down view of what it will look like either outside in the front yard or on the first floor, which is above grade, or the second floor where the bedrooms are. So do you guys have renderings of what views will look like from the street looking up? Because even knowing the dimensions of the building, I know that the, I think Souza kind of slopes up as you go eastward. So even knowing the height of the building, it's hard to know exactly what that will look like compared to my house. So do you have, and other abutters' houses? So do you guys have renderings of street level and maybe first and second floor views so we know what this is going to look like with all the landscaping and everything?
So we don't have those view shed renderings at this time, but that's something that we can talk about.
Okay.
Thank you.
John Reed, 21 Riverside Drive. Ma'am, you were asked a question about sidewalks a few minutes ago.
Yes.
Are you aware that this is a designated pedestrian-friendly destination?
I do understand that there's, that is within this area.
And knowing that it's a pedestrian-friendly destination, you have not presented or at this point prepared or studied a sidewalk on Souza. Is that correct?
So we have worked with the TRC to establish a pedestrian connection at the intersection of Main and Schooner, that we have a crosswalk, handicap-accessible ramps leading into the site, into the main portion of the building.
Perhaps you didn't hear my question. My question is whether you had prepared anything regarding a sidewalk along Souza, as was questioned a few minutes ago. Is the answer to that no?
We have not looked at Souza.
Thank you.
May Madam Chair, I want to point out, the friendly, pedestrian-friendly zone only runs along Main Road. It does not apply to any, where we have any of the improvements on the site.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Marcello can figure whether that's the case or not, but as I look at the map, that whole area is called pedestrian-friendly, no?
This is a split-zone lot, and Mr. Stolson is correct. We had a lot of discussion on this at the TRC. It is, it's mostly on Main Road. And it's, I forgot the distance from the, from the property line, but I think it's maybe 50 feet. This is a very unique lot in that it is a split zone. Only part of it is the pedestrian-friendly district. The other part is general commercial.
Nevertheless, granting that, if one were truly interested in being hospitable to the neighboring community, one would be concerned about pedestrians and would address that issue rather than leave it until a later matter. And that would be in everyone's best interest. Thank you.
We understood the comment that was made earlier regarding potential sidewalks on Souza Road. We're going to commence review of that.
Thank you.
Can there be no comments from the peanut gallery? If you have something to say, come up here and identify yourself and say it on the record, please. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Martin, 313 Neck Road. You have said that a view shed rendering has not been done for the abutters. Is that correct? Either the abutters on Main Road or on Souza Road?
Correct. This is the, this is the only rendered plan besides the architectural elevations. There's no 3D perspective, I think, is what you're referring to, view shed rendering.
Yes, 3D from the perspective of the abutters so that we actually, and the zoning board can actually see what this will look like. So I guess maybe what I would like to request is that the zoning board ask for that for the abutters so that not only can the abutters see what they're going to be faced with, but you can see what it will actually look like so that you can make a proper decision.
Mr. Stolson, is that something that you can address?
I'll discuss the feasibility of doing it. It's not part of the application checklist.
I understand.
And it's, it might not be physically possible to do the way people are hoping to see it, but we have resources, and we're going to try to deploy them to assist your review of that.
I'd certainly like to see, I think that that's a fair question.
Yeah, yeah. We'll start on figuring out what we can provide.
Thank you.
With the intent of reflecting a better perspective for the neighbors and for the board. We understand the question.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Gail Lawrence. I live on Long Pasture Way in Tiverton. And I'm going to ask for a quantifying question, and maybe it's not going to be quantifiable. But I believe your site plan person has completed a number of these projects. And I would like her to provide us with some sense of how this project stands against the others on a scale of 1 to 10, with 1 being ideal and 10 being off-the-charts not ideal.
Thank you. We understand that question. That was raised in a different way with comparing it to other specific sites. We'll provide some detail of comparing a number of sites quantitatively, square footage, building area, et cetera. I think that would be helpful to you to know and the board to know how this compares with other sites, for sure.
Thank you. And I would, if possible, I'd like to have some overlay of an aesthetic or subjective sense of that same thing. The numbers will not fully tell the story that's developing in our town. And I guess I want you and your colleagues to appreciate how deeply concerned many of us really are about trying to better understand this project and its impact.
We do. I understand that, and we hope our work in that regard will show you we understand the scope and scale of this site when compared to other projects. We understand that and appreciate your, that question.
Steve Moni, 1049 Main Road. I'd like to second that shed view because I am an abutter. Now, as I said before, I'm at a lower elevation for that canopy. I'm going to be looking right into those lights until midnight. Thanks. And can you do a noise pollution one for us also because of the TVs on the pumps and the drive-through intercom system? And I believe your traffic study's flawed, too. Can't wait to get to that.
We will be presenting noise calculations with an engineer. And as we previously stated, we'll start working on some view perspectives to help understand the impact on the abutters.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Maureen Morrow. I'm Peaceful Way. And I'm here tonight, I'm a member of the litter committee in town, and I'm speaking for myself and for the members of that committee that work really hard to try to prevent litter and then remediate litter when we have a problem. So currently, if my count's correct, we have four drive-throughs in town. And drive-throughs create litter. There is just no question about it. People who are, you know, not thoughtful about what they do, fling their coffee cups out windows, their snack wrappers, napkins, and so forth. And all you really have to do is drive up near Bliss Four Corners, near Dunkin' Donuts and Sip &amp; Dip, all along. The road across from our beautiful library is full of litter. And human beings are the ones that have to pick up that litter. I always, you know, sort of half-jokingly say, there are no little elves that go out in the middle of the night and pick it up. And we do have a crew of about 70 volunteers that have adopted parts of the town. So I just want to encourage the leadership in town to say no to a drive-through.
This is an opportunity to question the witness. You can give your opinion of the project at the end.
All right. Okay, then I do have a couple of questions. What's Colbea's experience in other towns, especially small towns like ours, with litter? And how have you collaborated with the town to remediate it?
So two-part answer. First, is Mr. Simpson, our environmental engineer, has looked at comments with respect to trash generally, but more specifically, we'll look into a specific litter comparison as well to see if we can find means and methods of reducing litter. And we'll try to determine what litter ramifications there are with our drive-through operations. It's a fair question. We understand it. In general, we're prepared to talk about trash generally and trash cleanup, but specifically with litter, we'll look into that as well.
Would Colbea consider moving forward with this project without a drive-through?
We haven't, and we're applying for one, so we haven't considered that. But we're happy to address your questions regarding the litter ramifications of the drive-through.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you all provided an impact study of the other businesses north of this station, as well as the number of jobs that will be impacted? The three gas stations, the two donut shops, and then the other food and general goods stores? There's five of them just north of this location.
Ms. Ashley, so as a matter of legal principle, this board cannot consider the economic impacts that this proposal will have on other businesses. That's beyond the scope and the standards that we have to apply. This came up at the planning board, and is improper for this board to consider economic considerations in whether or not a special use permit should be granted or not. And I know you might not like that answer, but that's the law in the state of Rhode Island. So we can't, this board cannot consider that at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hopefully, we can get on to the next witness. I can't wait to find out who that will be.
Madam Chair, our next witness is Ed Pimentel, our planning and zoning expert. And just so you know, what we're anticipating the order of witnesses to be, I apologize if I didn't say it in the beginning, was we thought this would flow for everybody's benefit, and we can continue to coordinate with opposing counsel on this, is we start with the site layout planning, then the planner, then we'll go to our environmental engineer, the impacts of the planning, and then of the planning, and then our traffic engineer, and then our final expert will be our real estate expert, Jim Hull. That's the sequence we're anticipating going. But we're happy to work with everybody on that sequence.
Thank you very much.
So Mr. Pimentel is next. Ed, why don't you use the podium?
Can everybody hear me? No? Can you hear me?
No.
You can't hear me?
Mr. Pimentel?
We need to swear the witness.
Yes, please do.
Would you be so kind, or would you like me to do it?
Oh.
I do. Edward Pimentel, that's P as in Paul. I-M-E-N-T-E-L. Thank you.
Now, just to introduce Mr. Pimentel and why I've asked him to testify, or the applicant has asked him to testify, and then I'm not going to do a lot of direct examination. We'll let Mr. Pimentel talk to the standards that he's addressing. But let me just ask some foundational questions as we get them on the record. Mr. Pimentel, have you had the opportunity to review the application before the board?
I have. I've been involved since the initial land development project.
Okay, great. Thank you. And have you had the opportunity to consider this special use permit, three applications for the three different special use permits in their context, and the Tiverton ordinance with respect to the standards to be met for special use permits for those three uses?
That is correct, as they would be applicable in light of the consistency and compatibility because the comprehensive plan is what provides the guidance and direction to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Well, with that background, could you give the board and the public the benefit of your analysis on the compatibility and additional considerations under the standards of the special use permit?
Sure.
I may ask some follow-up questions afterward.
Okay. I didn't mean this to be a history lesson in zoning or planning, but I feel maybe since there's public here and so forth, maybe we need to get a lot on the record. So I was charged with reviewing the comprehensive plan to make a determination on comprehensive plan consistency, and in that light, what the comprehensive plan would speak to regarding compatibility and so forth of the various land uses. Obviously, when it comes down to specific site design criteria and requirements, there are different experts in the field, right? So the comprehensive plan will generally speak to things such as, you've got to make sure you address drainage in an environmentally sound manner, using lit principles, so forth, and so things like that. So that goes into the report. Obviously, the specifics of traffic, how the drainage system is designed, landscaping and so forth, we have experts. The second component, what I do as part of that review, is also to ensure that we're trying to meet the regulations to the extent we can. In other words, in this design, we're not asking for any dimensional variances. We're not departing from the regs. When we went through the initial master plan for the land development, ensuring that we meet the design criteria and so forth, that we didn't need, I'm sorry, that we didn't need any waivers. So we're meeting all of the respects of design criteria. We're meeting all of the respective dimensional criteria. Obviously, we need some special use permits because that's what this community has concluded. But in that light, I would like to offer the following. Rhode Island is a unique state in that most states' comprehensive plan or master plans, as they call them, are only advisory documents. Our sister state, Massachusetts, their master plans are advisory-only. The state of Rhode Island, alternatively, and many states have looked at Rhode Island's laws, is that the comprehensive plan actually is utilized for all regulatory local decision-making. So that means your regulations, such as your zoning regulations, your subdivision regulations, those are the tools that are used to effectuate the goals, objectives, policies of the comprehensive plan in a more specific manner. But the zoning ordinance must be consistent with the comp plan. It's not the other way around. I refer to, I don't have to refer to Rhode Island general law, but right within your own regs, Article 19 speaks to the process that this would have had to go through. A, it's an iterative process that involves the public participation. You have internal first discussions, then you go to the planning board, which is advisory, and there'd be public participation, and then ultimately to the council. Why are these things important? Because the determination of this property zoned in a general commercial district manner, including the abutting property, and then subsequently to that, as to the land uses that would otherwise be permitted or conditionally permitted, because they're not prohibited, and conditionally permitted by special use permit, would have gone through this very vigorous process. Discussions, public participation. In part of that process, there would have been statements of consistency and appropriateness that all would have been done and completed. So when we speak to compatibility and consistency between uses, that's why you have properties that are zoned, general commercial or the properties zoned residential, because it goes through this iterative process. So why were these properties zoned in the manner they were zoned? Once again, you rely to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is very specific. Throughout every single element, it speaks to the overall vision of preserving rural character, and then in turn, it speaks to the need to meet all of the necessary components so that a community can survive and thrive. You need housing. You need a stable commercial industrial tax base, et cetera. A commercial and industrial tax base. So how do you designate the appropriateness of these various properties? And the criteria is laid out very precisely in your comprehensive plan. First and foremost, where is the requisite infrastructure? I will speak right out of your comprehensive plan because that's what I rely on. It's the document that provides me the guidance to reach my conclusions. For example, the entire southern portion of the town, the desire is to preserve in rural character because you lack the infrastructure. Water is primarily dedicated to the north, and even in sparse areas of the north, there's no water. Sewer, 94% of all homes and businesses rely on OWTSs. There's no access to sewer. So when you start to layer what the requisite requirements are for a property to be able to accommodate specific uses, that's what you rely on. You rely on the comprehensive plan, and then ultimately, that's what results in properties being zoned in the manner that they're zoned. Thirdly, the roadway infrastructure. Commercial businesses have to be located on an appropriate roadway structure. Main Street, Souza Road, proximity to Route 24. If you look to how the DGC district is defined, it talks about those properties that accommodate retail and service businesses, and it's located along your major commercial corridor. It's what it says right along Main Road. Furthermore, those are what I would deem the required criteria. Now, what are the additional preferred? The comprehensive plan wishes to, to the extent it can, preserve your pristine land resources, those that have not been disturbed, those that may be constrained, those that may have seen equalities. So therefore, you want to utilize to the extent feasible those areas that have already been disturbed. This property was utilized for a much more intrusive, intensive, and industrial land use. It was a tank farm. Fourth, another criteria that's not necessarily required, but it's appropriate from a land use perspective, is what does the property abut? The property is surrounded by general commercial. It's not surrounded by residential, zone property. The property is contiguous to a continuous property that's zoned GC, this property, and then two roadways. That is what it abuts. So when you add up all these criteria, I understood why this town concluded that this property is appropriate for general commercial, and then ultimately that these uses would be deemed conditionally permitted. Throughout every one of your elements, you strive in direction to the various boards and commissions of the concern that you have on the heavy, heavy reliance on the residential tax base that's not sustainable. It states that most of the town's tax revenue is generated by residential uses, and expansion of the commercial would lessen the burden on the residential. I mean, this quote is one of several quotes that's in my report. This is a unique situation in that I know that this board has already thoroughly reviewed my report because it was part of the appeals process. I had to argue consistency with the comprehensive plan then, and it's just a two-step process. You argue it when you achieve the master plan, you argue it before the special use. But it's the same argument that I put before the planning board, why I concluded that this was so appropriate. While from the special use permit standards that would fall within my field of expertise, there's compatibility because this would have been, once again, the conclusion of this community in zoning a GC and allowing these uses conditionally permitted. Because this community has the right to regulate its land usage, you could have deemed these uses prohibited, and you did it. And by the way, you have very few properties in this community, this large community, that are zoned in a commercial manner, and you even have sparse few properties that are zoned in a general commercial. There's less than 30 properties town-wide. I went through every one, reviewed all of them through your GIS, and it's under 30 properties. So the point is, how many properties can and have all of the requisite criteria to accommodate these uses? So therefore, I understood why the community did what they did, and that's why I concluded not only comprehensive, but consistency, but I felt very comfortable in arguing compatibility.
Mr. Pimentel, if you conclude that this site is consistent with the community comprehensive plan generally in the general commercial zone, and the zoning ordinance allows fuel dispensers by special use permit, a drive-through by special use permit, and it's signage program by special use permit, how does the special use permit criteria, how do the special use permit criteria fit into your assessment from a planning standpoint? And why do you think each of the three, you call them conditionally permitted uses, which is another phrase for special use permits, why are they appropriate as requested for this board to consider?
Sure. Because of that vigorous process that all communities must go through when they're initially zoning a property or considering a rezoning of a property, right? The zoning designation of a property has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan in two forms. It's got to be textually consistent, furthering goals, objectives, policies, and more importantly, it's got to be consistent with the community's future land use map. In fact, a lot of communities have kind of gleaned over the future land use map, and that's why as part of all these numerous statutory amendments that just went into effect, the main one that's coming up shortly this year is that now, it's mandatory, as it was before, but they made it clear, that all local land use decision-making procedures have to be based on that future land use map. This future land use map designates this property for commercial development, which supports and concludes the appropriateness of the general commercial. As part of that, when the council and the planning board, through their advisory role, are looking at the specific land uses that would be accommodated in this district and the properties that are zoned in that manner, they have to consider the appropriateness of surrounding land uses. They have to consider what are the site characteristics of these properties, what are the infrastructure improvements and so forth. And that's when I say, if it's conditionally permitted and you meet all of those checking off the boxes as detailed in the comprehensive plan, you are inherently consistent and you obviously are compatible because that would be the conclusion.
I have a quick question. Sorry. I have a quick question. When was, was it 2018 that our comprehensive plan was revised?
So your comprehensive plan was adopted by the town council on April 30th, 2018.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions of Mr. Pimentel, but I would like the opportunity to continue the dialogue as we did with the other witness.
Sure. Any member of the board have any questions?
I have a question. Thanks for the lesson, by the way. According to you, so we shouldn't be here tonight. This is foregone conclusion. My question is, this is our job to make sure, it doesn't matter what you read, and I appreciate what you read, it's my job to make sure, was being built on that property, it might be right, and I've said that before, I was coming with a question. Might be right, and I agreed with that in past meetings, but it has to be built within our small community. I understand what your comprehensive plan, what you read, these stations, these businesses, these commercial properties, whatever they are, they're still in a small town. Do you take, and when you make an application, does that cross your mind that I'm not putting this in providence?
Correct, sir. So that's why my initial statement to this board was, when, my role here is the bigger picture. Is the proposal inherently consistent? Is it appropriate compatibility? The specific unique nuances of the design to make sure it fits character, it fits the needs of this community and this board, the unique elements of landscaping and architecture, those are all important. That's why this board exists in the role. It's for those unique elements. It's not a matter of saying, "We don't like or we like the project." That's what it means by special use. It's not a likability test. It's about, is the use appropriate? Now, how do we make that use appropriate to fit the property? That's what this whole role of a special use is for, and that's why you have the different design experts to address those very specific concerns that this board may raise. That's why, under a special use permit, unlike a variance, you've got all those conditions of approvable that are reasonable that can be imposed. The Rhode Island general law has given you that right. If they're required to the extent practical, you have a right to impose those conditions to make sure that it fits that property. But from the bigger picture, it is inherently consistent and appropriate. I'm not speaking to the specific unique design elements. That is your role, and I'm not taking that role away from you.
Thank you.
Ms. Benson, would you like to cross-examine?
Actually, Your Honor, I'd rather my colleagues start tonight.
Okay.
Put the planning cross.
So I'd like to thank you for the explanation to the board, to the public, myself, describing the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinances and how they interplay between that. And certainly, as a practitioner, that's my job to understand that. In 15 years, I taught land use planning at Roger Williams University, so I have that experience providing that information to folks that may not be familiar with it. So I think you're correct. Rhode Island is unique about the legal effect of the comprehensive plan, in that it's very specific, it's laid out. It's a partnership, right? There's a compact. The town says, hey, and the people, through their town council, first through the planning board, making recommendations, which allows public hearings and then approved by the town council. But ultimately, it's a compact amongst the community. Here's the blueprint. Here's how we want our town to look, okay? And we set forth recommendations, goals, action plans. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And zoning also is very specific. It identifies what types of zoning districts, residential, commercial, industrial, manufacturing. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, the industrial would encompass manufacturing, and there's different designations of residential, but that's correct.
Not to get picky, but are there not zones in some communities that are zoned industrial and others that are manufacturing? Are you saying they're both always the same?
No, I'm saying there's an umbrella of zoning designation. So under the residential, there would be different density.
Understood.
Under the industrial, there'd be different density. So there may be some that have a light industrial, a heavy industrial, a manufacturing, but they're under the umbrella of industrial.
Understood. Okay. So here, we have general commercial. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And general commercial allows certain uses as of right. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And in this town, what does it allow? What is allowed as of right in general commercial?
Well, I'd have to pull up the use schedule for me to be correct and precise on what uses would be otherwise permitted.
Gas station?
No, the fuel dispensing requires a special use permit.
Drive-through?
Special use permit.
Signage?
No. Signage is not a use.
Gotcha. Okay. But it does require a special use permit for these signs.
That's because this community took a very interesting stance, as did some other communities. So in most communities, if you ask the question, I'll just answer it. In most communities, what happens is they regulate signage purely as a dimensional issue, meaning... issue, meaning that they don't take into consideration the unique nuances of the property. Doesn't matter if you have a large-scale property, a smaller-scale property, everybody's treated the same. It's like a setback. It's very subjective, has no application to the uniqueness of the property. What the town of Tiverton did took the same stance as the town of Lincoln did. You want to have regulatory control, because it's not a one-size-fits-all. The Lincoln Mall is limited to the same amount of signage as a little mom-and-pop store, but they treat it as a special use, because they realize the Lincoln Mall can accommodate a greater degree of signage than can a mom-and-pop store. That's what the town of Tiverton did. They said, "Let us review it to see if it's appropriate, given the unique characteristics of the property."
So, what you just explained, at first I thought it was unnecessary, but it actually is, because it underscores this hearing and this process.
Sure.
That this town has decided that signage is really important.
Sure.
Unlike the other towns, this town has made a very deliberate decision to say, through this special use process, we want to make sure that signs are not problematic with the goals and policies that the community has said, "This is our blueprint, this is our compact." And the town said, "Yeah, we get it, and we're going to control signage," is that correct?
Well, no, the way you phrase that question insults other municipalities. You said, "Unlike other communities who don't care and just establish dimensional criteria." That's not what I said.
No, no, I didn't say that.
You implied that.
I never used the word dimensional.
I'm not going to respond to a question insults.
Time out, time out. Can we all talk a little slower, so the stenographer can get this?
So, what I stated was, what I expressed was, if a municipality only purely regulates signage by dimensional criteria, then subsequently to that, you have no say on whether a site could potentially accommodate more signage. It would be more appropriate. This allows an applicant to come forward to the board and say, "We believe, given the unique characteristics of the operation and the site, we can accommodate additional signage. It fits in, it's required, line of sight, multiple frontages, vehicular speed, there's a lot of things that go into it, and we're not going to speak to it, because we've got experts." But that's why a special use permit is more appropriate, because it's not a one-size-fits-all.
Yes, and I agree. This project in a GC, in a general commercial, right, is not one-size-fits-all. There needs to be a lot of deliberation by the zoning board to determine whether or not this project, and it's all its particulars, signs, its use, traffic, all of that, is appropriate for this general commercial zone. Would you agree?
Disagree.
Okay.
And the courts have disagreed with you.
Okay. So, I think then, I'm not sure what the zoning board's here for.
The case law, the case law doesn't say, sir, I'm answering your question.
I'm going to object, he's not an attorney.
Let him answer your question.
He's not an attorney, I don't want to hear what he has to suggest about what the law is, case law.
He's a zoning expert, let him say what the law is. You brought it up, let him answer the question.
The law has, the Supreme Court has already ruled that when you're a conditionally permitted land use, it doesn't mean you're precluded from that zone, because that would be stepping into the legislative board. Sir, you just asked a question.
I'm not suggesting that.
Sir, you said that use in the general commercial zone, so you're applying it blanket. I'm saying inherently, you're applying it blanket across the general commercial zone. Inherently, the use is already permitted in the general commercial district. What is unique about this property that would preclude us from introducing a fuel dispensing operation in the drive-through? And I said, "There are no unique aspects that would preclude that use. The use is already conditionally permitted. We meet all the criteria. We absolutely should be entitled to the fuel dispensing and the drive-through. Absolutely." Now, the design of it, the uniqueness of it, how it's laid out, those are all criteria we can discuss.
So, what are the standards that the applicant needs to meet to obtain a special use permit for the gasoline station?
Compatibility, and that it won't be a nuisance. Those are the two that I address.
Is that what it was?
A nuisance. Yeah. The public convenience and welfare will be served?
What, no, no, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you asked me.
As I read the standard of review under the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. There are six standards under Article 15, Section 2, which must be satisfied for a special use permit to be granted.
Yeah.
Any one that fails is a basis to deny the special use permit.
That's correct.
Okay. So, this is not already approved in this area, it has to make sure that the use, let's talk about the gas station, does not violate one of those six standards. Irrespective of whichever ones you addressed, do you agree there are six standards that this gasoline needs to meet in order for it to be approved?
On this specific property? Not generally in the zone, because we've already know that the use is permitted in the general zone. If your argument is that should not be allowed in the GC district, you've violated the legislative determination that it is appropriate.
I'm asking tonight...
I'm sorry, you violated?
You violated that the legislative authority has already determined that this use is inherently permissible in the general commercial district.
Okay. Well, if it's inherently allowed, why are we here tonight?
Because of the design of it.
Just the design?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, as we are looking at the design of this project?
Yes.
Okay, we need to evaluate this design based on six standards.
Correct.
Okay. And any of those six standards that are not met would be a basis for this project to be denied.
Sure.
Okay. So, let's look at that. Public convenience and welfare will be served.
Sure.
Did you address that?
A gas station, a drive-through, a retail convenience does serve the public welfare and convenience.
In which way?
People use gas, people go through a drive-through.
Okay. And so, are there any downsides to the public's welfare and convenience for this project to be located there?
Not from a use perspective.
Not a matter of use?
Correct, that's what I'm here to address.
How about the use of the neighboring properties?
This community has already concluded that zoning this property GC and allowing these uses conditionally, knowing what the surrounding zoning designations were, because it was this community that zoned all the properties, already determined and rendered compatibility.
Well, if that was the case, we wouldn't be here tonight. I think that the zoning board, respectfully, okay? And you can disagree with me, because obviously you will.
Yeah.
I suspect that you will. I'm going to assert to you that those six standards need to be met, and one of them is this, well, public convenience and welfare will be served.
Yes.
And so, it's not just whether or not the use, i.e. that it will serve the ability for people to get coffee in the morning or gasoline, it also has to serve the public convenience and welfare of the surrounding neighbors.
Correct.
Okay? And my point would be that Mr. Winter, Mr. Money is not, their convenience and welfare is not served. I would submit that the people who have to fight the traffic that this is going to generate, their convenience and welfare is not being served.
Sir, your argument would be then applicable, if your argument had any validity, to all properties that are zoned GC, because there's going to be residents surrounding every GC. Sir, I got to answer the question.
No, no, there was no question, it was an assertion.
Okay, that's fine.
Please listen, please not talk over each other.
Sure.
Because I lose everything, and so does she, and there goes the record. So, let's try to let everybody speak and not talk over each other, okay?
My only concern, Madam Chair, is I know when I have a runaway witness, and Mr. Pimental is not only not answering my questions, he's offering up further testimony.
He's trying to answer your questions. I don't think he's being, he's uncontrollable. I think he's answering your questions.
I would respectfully disagree that he's a runaway witness, and while he's trying to quote-unquote "answer my question," he's also trying to present additional argument. Let's place it on the record.
Isn't that how you answer questions? He's trying to do that. Let him testify. Could you read the question and the answer back, so I know what the hell people are talking about? Well, she got that, I don't think she got it, they're talking at the same time.
Question, and my point would be that Mr. Winter, Mr. Money is not here.
Could you give, could you give her the microphone, so everybody can hear what she's saying?
Not that way. Okay, and my point would be that Mr. Winter, Mr. Money is not, something in welfare is not served, and I would submit that people who fight the traffic, that this is going to generate...
Ms. LeBlanc, if you can speak into the microphone, they can't hear you on the back.
Yeah, I'm having a real problem.
Yeah, I think we're all having a real problem.
Yeah. That's the easiest way, and I'll say it slowly. So, the first criteria, Mr. Pimental, can you hear me? Is whether or not the public's convenience and welfare will be served. You've indicated that everyone needs gas, and therefore, the public's convenience and welfare is served.
Correct.
And I'm asking you, is Mr. Mahoney's and Mr. Winter's, my client, Ms. Hayward, who live in the direct vicinity of Butters, within 200 feet, however you want to describe them, knowing the testimony about light and some of the folks about traffic, will their convenience and welfare be served by this project?
I can't speak to the specifics of the lighting and the traffic. What I can speak to is just the broader picture. From a use perspective, it will be served.
That they will benefit more from the ability to get gas and coffee?
I didn't say more. I said generally, is the public convenience, it doesn't talk about any specific individual, is the public convenience and welfare will be served? The uses do serve the public.
And the use could also harm the public, is that correct?
Only if it's not designed correctly.
Okay. And you didn't design the project?
I'm not a designer.
Okay.
I'm speaking to the comprehensive plan.
Only to the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Okay. So, assuming it was designed correctly, it wouldn't cause a harm?
That's correct.
But you didn't design it?
I'm not a traffic expert.
Or a site planner?
Correct.
Okay. It will not be, the second criteria?
Yes.
It will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare?
Same answer.
Okay. So, you're not opine, you're making the opinion that, what is the answer?
The answer is, is that it is inherently consistent and appropriate. The reason for this is to make sure that the characteristics of the property and the way it being designed is appropriate for that project.
And, and based on its design, that you know of?
Correct.
Can you make the opinion that it's not, that it's not going to be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare?
I could comment only generally from a land use perspective, I'm not going to speak outside my field of expertise.
Third, it will be compatible with neighboring uses, it will not adversely affect the general character of the area.
Correct.
And your opinion on that is?
It's a budding general commercial property, it's classified commercial in the future land use map, as is all of Main Street, and it has all the criteria under the comprehensive plan as for appropriateness, comprehensive plan, for appropriateness of being zoned in a GC manner. So, yes, it is compatible and appropriate.
Is it compatible with Mr. Mahoney's property across the street, which is residential?
This municipality says yes.
No, this particular project?
Yes.
It's made that decision?
This, the uses of this property I'm speaking to are appropriate. You get into the specifics, I can't get into specifics.
Okay. So, this specific project?
Yes.
As designed, as you've seen, and everyone's reviewing?
Yes.
Is it compatible with Mr. Mahoney's use?
It is a general commercial property, so yes.
Mr. Winter's?
Yes.
This specific project is consistent with his, his surrounding property?
Yes.
Ms. Hayward?
Yes.
Okay.
People buy property in a residential zone next to a commercial zone. It's compatible.
I had a conversation with Mr. Winter's, and I asked him whether or not, if he knew this was coming in, whether he would buy that property, and he said, "Absolutely not."
Well, I can't speak to that. I'm talking about when you buy a property, you know that property's a zoned in a specific manner, right?
Maybe, if...
Okay, all right.
You and I would, but the layperson wouldn't.
If they don't know that, they don't know that. What I'm saying is, I've got to rely on the municipality, the municipality and their logic, because they zoned this property general commercial. They're the ones that made the determination, what is the criteria for zoning a property in a GC? What would be the criteria for the uses that would either be permitted or conditionally permitted? I didn't make those rules, the municipality did. If this municipality thought, there's residential to the south, there's residential across the street to the west, you know what, we're going to zone this property residential, they could have done that. They could have also said, "We're not going to allow service stations, we're not going to allow drive-throughs." They could have done that. That wasn't the end conclusion, and that was not done in a vacuum. That would have been done through the planning board process, through the council process, public participation. It's not done, it's done in a very transparent manner.
Mediated and measured through the special use permitting process, that these general commercial properties?
Yes.
Inherently could have a gas station, inherently could have a drive-through, inherently could have quite a few things, but only if it meets these seven criteria.
Correct.
Six, excuse me.
Correct.
Okay. And that's what we're here for tonight.
I agree.
To make a determination whether or not these six criteria are being met or not for this project, not just broadly speaking, because I think the only thing that's allowed here potentially as of right is a convenience drive, that's part of it, right?
I'm not clear if you were asking me a question or not, because sometimes it seems like you're throwing statements and questions. There's a two-part tiered system to this. A, the permissibility of uses, and then B, the way those uses are designed and introduced. That are designed and introduced. Okay, first, I'm sorry. It's a two-tiered system, right, under the special use. First, we're talking about the use itself, broadly speaking. It's already inherently consistent and appropriate. Then it comes down to meeting the standards from a design perspective, right? There's less than thirty properties zoned general commercial pursuant to this town's GIS. I went through all of them. Some of them would be simply too small, too small to accommodate a development of the scale. Others don't have the proper access, so there's going to be site characteristics that would preclude it. Those site characteristics don't exist with this property, and I know that, because there's the checks that are provided by the comprehensive plan. It's got the necessary road frontage, it's on the appropriate roadway network, it's got sewer, water, it's been previously disturbed, it's got the acreage for an appropriate design, separating the drive-through from the fuel pumps, the convenience, it can be laid out in appropriate manner. The nuances is the role of this board, that's the role of this board. Your argument, it's going back to always, but it should be prohibited. That's what you're arguing.
No, I'm not...
Sir, that is what you're arguing.
Well, I respectfully disagree, I'm not saying it should be prohibited. What I'm saying is, is that the appropriateness of any project requiring a special use permit is the purview of this board to make sure that something that is quote-unquote inherently and already approved by the town is appropriate, site specifically appropriate.
Correct.
Okay. And that's what we're here for tonight, six standards, and I want to make sure that the board and the public recognize that not all GC zones are appropriate for these inherently already approved uses.
No, that statement, that statement's stated incorrectly.
That's all right, it was a question, I'm making a...
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. Now, you say it'll be compatible with the comprehensive community plan of the town of Tiverton, and frankly, I think that is your wheelhouse.
Correct.
I think the other five above that are outside your purview of review, but suffice it to say...
That's for the board to decide, right? That's for the board to decide whether or not he's an expert in other things, others.
Well, if Madam Chair wants to make that opinion of Mr. Solicitor, she can.
I'm just saying, that's what...
As a matter of law...
He's been only offered for, he's only been offered testimony to be compatibility with the comprehensive plan and the zoning. That's all he's been offered for, as the expert, and the board accepted that. So, we talk about traffic, we talk about litter, that's beyond his scope, he's indicated many times that's beyond the scope, so he's here to be focusing on compatibility with the comprehensive, excuse me, compatibility with the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, as well as the zoning and the special use permit. That's what he's been offered as, Chris, and you know that.
Yes, I do. However, he's given much testimony about how the comprehensive plan and zoning interact, and that it's inherently permissible, and I needed to go through why it's not, as he suggested, by laying out the five, six standards. Now, we come to the sixth one, which I would agree with you, is his purview. Now we come to the sixth one, which I would agree with you, is his purview, as he's been offered as an expert, and as I have relied upon him when he worked for me. So now, you indicated, maybe not in your testimony, but I know in your report.
Which page?
Not sure, but you can, we'll just, I'll ask you the question.
Okay.
Okay, you said that it will foster much-needed new economic stream for Tiverton and further numerous goals, the objectives of the plan, most notably locating a needed community service in one of very few appropriate zoned areas.
That's correct.
So it's providing this economic, and you've also testified, maybe even in your report, that it's important, the comprehensive plan wants to have economic activities to support its tax base.
Correct.
Doesn't the comprehensive plan also want to encourage jobs that are much more sustainable, meaning higher wage-paying jobs?
Sure.
Does, do you know what the wages are of the people who are going to be working behind the counter?
I do not.
Dunkin' Donuts?
Do not.
Okay, do you, do you imagine whether or not they are wages that sustain someone's livelihood with the town of Tiverton, you know, to buy a house, send your kid to college?
I don't know, and I don't understand the question, so...
Well, you're saying that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I'm saying that it will provide tax base.
Okay, what is the tax base?
A retail service, a retail service is a by right use. We can go pull a building permit for retail. The wages would be the same as the wages in this business. I'm speaking to all properties that can be utilized to generate a tax base is important. Some are always going to be probably better than others, but I, there is no, right, there's no threshold as a requirement that unless you're paying $100,000 salary, then that's an appropriate commercial use. That doesn't exist.
No, I'm not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is that the comprehensive plan calls for and wants to encourage higher paying wages.
It wants a lot of things. It wants to make sure services are provided, obviously, gas stations.
I just asked a question. It calls for higher, seeks to develop businesses with higher wages. Is that kind of an accurate statement?
That would be accurate. Yeah, it's a balance test, and that's why you hope to acquire higher industry, right? Pharmaceuticals, that would pay a higher jobs. Services, the wages may not be, but you need the services, so it's a balance test.
Sure.
We need to provide everything.
I understand the balancing, but this isn't going to meet, is it going to hit that ticket of a high wage-paying jobs?
I didn't say that. I talked about producing taxes. It needs to help stabilize a commercial and industrial tax base to offset an unsustainable residential tax base.
Maybe you didn't say it's going to create low or high. I'm asking the question. You said, yes, the comprehensive plan, one of its goals and policies is to have development that creates high wages.
Sure, all communities want to track that.
So then the next question is, is this project consistent with that goal?
That's silly. That's a silly question. That question's silly. That would be absurd. That would be like you pulling out of the comprehensive plan, that the overall vision of this community is to protect its rural character. Does developing this property protect the rural character? Obviously, it's a balance test. There's going to be industries that generate high-income jobs. There's going to be other industry that provide necessary services. We need grocery stores. Clerks in a grocery store don't make high wages, but we need a grocery store, and so forth. So pulling and plucking one thing out of the comprehensive plan to shoot down this project is being disingenuous, sir. Highly disingenuous.
I have many more.
I'm sure.
And I take umbrage with you suggesting that I'm being disingenuous.
You are being disingenuous.
Well, I take umbrage with it.
Take umbrage.
Okay, so I will, and I return the favor.
Sir, you know very well that I could go through a concrete...
I know you very well.
Sir, I could go through a...
Oh, come on, come on.
Exactly, so I know it's...
We've got five minutes before quitting time, so why don't we stop the sparring and go on with your questioning?
Five minutes? I have way more than five minutes.
That's fine. We're not going to be done tonight.
So why don't we just end it right now, and I'll pick up where I left off?
If you want to do that? Everybody's in agreement with that? Everybody in agreement with that, counsel? Okay. Okay, before we wrap it up.
All right, we've got to figure out, when's our next zoning board meeting?
First Wednesday of...
February? February 7th, right, so this is my suggestion. I think the board should vote to continue this matter to February 7th, 2024, our next regular meeting. However, like we did the last time, we'll use the week and a half to confer with counsel to probably set another special meeting probably in February to just focus on this. But for the record, I would suggest that the board continue this matter to February 7th, which is our next zoning board meeting officially tonight. Between now and then, I will ask counsel to supply dates where they're available for a special meeting. I will check with the board to see if they're available for a special meeting, so we can continue just this matter to another date, and then it will be posted on the agenda on the February 7th meeting of that new date, if we can agree to it. If we can't agree to a new date, we'll put it down for February 7th.
Might I ask, Madam Chair, so as you can imagine, our clients are not as well-heeled as Colbya. And to have our experts, one of them being here tonight, is expensive.
I understand that.
And I don't, it sounds like we've even added maybe a couple of other experts, maybe an architect, I don't know.
I mean, it certainly doesn't look like they're going to be finished presenting their case in the next three-hour increment that we have to do this. Not, I mean, based on the amount of questions from the public and from the board, which are certainly relevant to our decision, you know, the lighting person, the environmental person, I imagine are going to take a significant amount of time. So, I mean, my inclination is to tell you, I don't think you're going to need your witnesses for the next hearing.
Or maybe the next two.
Maybe. Let's see how far we get.
Sure.
Believe me, I practiced criminal law for 44 years. I understand what it's like to have a witness sitting in a hallway for a week, when you don't have any money.
Right.
So...
So just to follow up on that, so one of the things that we had asked for originally, and I'm not sure whether or not your solicitor has conveyed this to you, and it's certainly been conveyed to Colbya's counsel, we were hoping that we could have a known date, and as this progresses, to say, okay, objectors, bring your witnesses on this date.
Well, I think we can do that, but we can't do it now.
Understood. Thank you. That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay.
Could we possibly schedule more than one hearing if counsel and the board are available so that we won't have to do this every time?
Well, I don't, you see, there are a lot of factors here. The availability of the high school, I have no idea. I have no idea when people are taking vacations. I have no idea if someone's going to get sick. You know, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I think we have to take it slowly, one step at a time, so nobody is spending money for experts that they can't afford, or they can or they cannot afford to pay. You know, this is not a game of wearing down people's assets. I want to have a full hearing. I want all the issues developed, and if we have to have successive meetings, we're going to have to have them. That's the way it is.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I ask a question? Is any way we could have these meetings start like an hour early, knowing that it is a special meeting, and I know we all work or stay, I'm not necessarily, I don't know what I'm talking about, because it's like somehow extended an hour?
I'm not extending it past 10 o'clock. I'm 71 years old, and I, this is already past my bedtime. You were the one that couldn't be here for 6 o'clock before, so...
This is for a special meeting?
Yeah.
No, no, don't, don't, this is a...
No, believe me, I'm happy to come earlier.
Okay, that's exactly what I'm saying. Can we discuss when the time come, if we take an hour somehow add it to this, and this, we're not here?
If that's convenient for everybody at the board, yes, but if people have jobs, we can't. That's the way it is.
We'll get the dates from counsel, but for right now, the vote of this board, this meeting will be continued to February, Wednesday, February 7th, correct?
That's the date, yes.
And then?
And we can commit, Preserved Tiverton can commit to having witnesses at a hearing, if, at any hearing. Maybe not all of our expert witnesses, but we have enough witnesses that we can say, we can keep it moving. We're not going to say, okay, you know, it's 9 o'clock, we're done. We're going to use all of the board's time as best we can, and we're committed to that.
And I think another factor that we have to consider is the, I would like to have transcripts of everything before we have to deliberate. I mean, we have to make very specific findings of fact, and I am not relying on my notes of this hearing tonight, because people are talking at the same time. You know, I can't hear certain things. I can't think and write at the same time. So the transcripts are a tremendous value, I'm sure, to every member of the board. So, you know, if we have to punctuate this and get our transcripts all in order, let's do that. But this is not a rush job. It isn't. That's the way it is. So I move to continue this to February 7th. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Kavanaugh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
We're continued, and I think we can also move to adjourn, which I do.
She does.
And we all do. Thank you.